At Council Plus Savings Bank, you still get personalized customer service.
We have identity safe checking with LifeLock, identity theft protection.
You get personal mortgage lending to fit your needs now and in the future.
You get business banking with the latest technology because saving you time saves you money.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get people who answer when you call and local employees who are actively involved in our community. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.
Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Let the record show that all council members are present except for Lynn Brandigan.
I'm here.
Oh.
My flight was canceled.
Oh, sweet. Let the record...
Well, that's cool.
I didn't even look over there, I'm sorry. I knew you weren't gonna be here. Let the record show all council members are here. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion in regards to the consent agenda? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Public hearings, this is a time and place where a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-02, approving plans, specification, form of contract, and cost estimate for the Rivers Edge subdivision improvement project Phase 1. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Are there any oral protests of this matter or any comments in general who would like to speak in regards to this? Seeing none, what's the council's pleasure?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Nay.
This is a time and place for a public hearing is advertised on the matter of Resolution 15-103, approving the plans and specifications and form of contract cost estimate for North 27th Street Sewer Rehab Phase 2, fiscal year 16-13. Is proof of publication on file?
It is on file.
Have any written protests been received?
None received.
Is there anyone here who wishes to speak in regards to this matter?
My name is Al Ruby, I live at 513 North 27th Street. On the Resolution 15-103, the cost of this thing, we're trying to figure out, the neighborhood got together and they're watching us tonight, I'm sure they are, trying to figure out the cost and we're sure we're gonna know, but why that cost wasn't brought up to the people in the neighborhood and what their biggest concern is, and mine too, my taxes went up when this was in the midst of happening and not only mine, but everybody else in the neighborhood, and the amount that it's gonna cost, I wanna know if my taxes are paying for that. But they are. And I also wanna know is that why we weren't notified that this was gonna happen and when they said that they'd never had any problems with the sewers, when in fact, everybody in this neighborhood from 9th Avenue all the way to Avenue G and further down, they had a lot of water, a lot of rain back up in the houses and the city come down, they checked their drains, they checked their storm sewers, they checked their sewage sewers, everything, and they said there was nothing wrong. After this all settled, 25% of the people in that neighborhood ended up banning Anderson's and also driver's plumbing to come down and replace a lot of things that were going on with the sewer. And I, these guys are still appalled of why they say there's nothing wrong with the sewers when in fact, the city's replacing this stuff because it's bad, correct?
Well, the city's replacing it because it's reached its end of its useful life.
Okay, so when I talked to Mrs. White, she said it was back in...
1913 was when it was constructed for our staff.
Yeah. I bought my house back in 96 and 10 years prior to that, Mrs. Allquest said that that front of that, which you can tell the difference between the areas that were done and what weren't done, is all new concrete. You know, why would they dig up a street and not replace the sewers and put all that money into it? Now it's coming back to the taxpayers because the city feels it's gotta be fixed when they should've been done a long time ago because of the issues we've been having down there. Now it's coming back to bite us in the butt and it's coming out of our pocket. And nobody was notified of the amount of money it was gonna cost us, why our taxes was going up, and when our taxes did go up, it was because it covered this. And nobody said anything about it. It was a good old boy syndrome.
Well, it's...
It is, it's a good old boy syndrome. They don't tell nothing to anybody or say to anybody until it's already done.
So what the city does is have a plan for rehab of streets and sewers. And how that plan works is that they don't then come to the neighbors and say, "Here's what the cost of replacing the sewer that was installed in 1913, do you agree that we should do that?" As people elect council members to make that decision, and it's a strategic plan. We work in off North Broadway, we've been working in that area. We work east of 1st Street, we've been working in that area, and we've been working down in the West End, north of Broadway. We did 32nd, I think, 31st or 32nd, now we're doing 27th and we're replacing that sewer system that's over 100 years old. And so, I don't understand...
Because they're saying that...
You yourself said there's been issues with it, it's time to replace it.
Right, but they're saying, and the lady that lived there said it was done in the early, around the late 1997, in the 80s when that was replaced the first time. You know, so I don't know if the city records are up to date or if that's up to date, but it's an issue and...
Well, there are times, Al, that, and I don't know that this is the case, 97 would not indicate it's the case, but there has been some work done in the West End related to the flooding as those pipes heaved and probably in prior years too. If there would have been a break or some maintenance needed on a specific area, but this is a complete replacement of the sewer line. So as you can see, they're starting down the street, 27th, working your way to the north.
And they're saying it's gonna take a year, probably, to do this, to do the whole street?
That would be my guess. And reason, part of that reason is the thing you were here concerned about last time is being able to access your property. I mean, we could do it quicker if we just went down and tore up the entire street and put it in in one swoop, but to stage it to make sure that people have access to their property takes a little longer.
Yeah, and I understand it and that's, and I get that, I get that 100%, but I'm just saying that when this was brought up, nobody in our neighborhood was notified and there's 64 people that's watching this right now and they're more than willing to come down and give you what they think and tell you what they think. This wasn't, nobody in our neighborhood was notified of this. It was started at the bank there from Broadway down to Avenue A and nobody knew what was going on with it, nobody heard anything about it. Then our taxes go up and we put our hands in the trust of the city council and we're thinking, wait a minute, the city council has got our property and our money in their hands and they're telling us what we can and cannot do with our money at a point of the sewer being done. Well, the city knew when we had this flood, there was gonna be issues with problems of flooding, that things were gonna be, start heaving, start breaking. There should've been a plan put in place.
Frankly, Al, it's a unique argument that I've never heard before. The converse argument is typically what we hear is that my street needs to be repaired and you're not repairing it. Now we're repairing streets and we're getting the argument, what are you doing repairing our street?
No, it's not, it's not the point of repairing the street, it's the point of my taxes going up on your guys' signature. You know, and I don't think, what I mean by signature, I don't think that the city of the residents in that neighborhood should be responsible every time something happens with a sewer because we're already paying taxes like crazy, be responsible for this.
This is paid for out of road use tax funds which come from gas taxes, which did go up, but wasn't a decision of this body.
But how, why did the tax go up all of a sudden on our homes and our homes increased if the property increased when this started?
The only thing I can tell you without looking specifically at your taxes is the levy hasn't increased from the city's perspective, there are other taxing entities. And so it could be the school district went up, which I think they've gone down the last two years. The county did go up and they went up 24%. And so that would be the first place I'd look, but the other thing that could've happened is the value of your property went up. And so it could be that the value of your property increased, but...
The assessed value.
Yeah, and I understand, but you know, and everybody has an assessed value and I get that, but I don't understand how it can jump from 105 to 108. And the only thing I haven't done was done my driveway yet, but I don't, I just don't understand how it jumped so high in my taxes. When I first got there was 14, 14 a year, now they're 26 something a year? You know, and you look at the neighborhood, there's a lot of nice homes, but there's a lot of bad homes in there. And the highest priced house that sold, it was huge, sold for 105,000. So you know, there's an issue with this.
Yeah, and without analyzing your specific, I can't tell you, Al, what that is.
But anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address council? Is there a motion from the council?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk?
Ordnance on Third Reading, Ordnance 6229, amending the zoning map as adopted by reference in Section 15.02.040 by rezoning property legally described as lying between I-480 and Avenue B west of existing North 40th Street, commonly referred to as Rivers Edge subdivision by rezoning proposed Block 1 from R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential District to R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential with a PR Plan Residential Overlay and rezoning proposed Blocks 2 and 6 from R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential and A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District to R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential with a PR Plan Residential Overlay as defined in Chapters 15.11 and 15.28 and by rezoning proposed Block 7 from R4 Density Multi-Family Residential District to C4 Commercial District as defined in Chapter 15.17 and by rezoning proposed Outlots A and B from R4 High Density Multi-Family Residential to A2 Parks Estates and Agricultural District, the property as defined in Chapter 15.05.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolutions, Resolution 15-104 authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the Master Contract Number 12-TC-071 by the buy-in between Google Inc., the City of Council Plus Iowa, and the Iowa Economic Development Authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Like many of my counterparts in the council, I'm very happy with the announcement and the plans by Google and they are indeed a new and good business partner to have. Their track record here in town since arriving has been very good partners. They have consistently not only met their word, but they've exceeded their word in many cases by going above and beyond. And as we welcome our new friend and we watch them grow here in the community, we had a discussion at the study session because as we move forward with this, we need to make sure that we're also looking out for our old friends, for the businesses and the homeowners in the community. And as the demands for resources grow, particularly for water, we want to make sure that those costs that are going to, or the demands for those resources are going to be increasing considerably, and we want to make sure that the city is well positioned to meet those demands, but that our new partner is also working with us to help address those demands and that the costs of those expanded services aren't being passed along to other customers. So as this agreement does not concern any property tax incentives, just solely state sales tax incentives, as we look forward to possible requests for property tax relief, I would certainly urge that the city to take those sorts of considerations into account when we negotiate an agreement, and I look forward to a growing prosperous relationship with Google.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-105 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Anderson Escavady Company for the 3149 West Broadway demolition and restoration project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-106 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with HGM Associates Incorporated for engineering services in connection with the ICAP project, Canesville Boulevard, US Highway 6, Traffic Adaptive Signal Control Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-107 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Valley Corporation for the Hazel Street Wall Repair Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-108 authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Compass Utility LLC for the South First Street Neighborhood Rehab Project, Phase 6.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 20-109 authorizing the city clerk to certify the 2015 garbage, water, and sewer lanes to the Potawatomi County Treasurer.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Just my quarterly comment about these lanes, I mean, this, these lanes today are over a quarter of a million dollars, so you know, I feel like the mother hen harping continually, but people, please pay your garbage bills, your water bills on time, please.
Other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-110 authorizing the mayor to execute a $3,061,224 Iowa Economic Development Authority Community Development Block Grant Program Contract Amendment for the City of Council Plus and the London Place Apartments Project.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-111 authorizing a joint application to the Iowa Economic Development Authority by the City of Council Plus and London Place Apartments LLC for workforce housing tax credit incentives.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-112 intend to grant preapproval of tax payment to London Place Apartments LLC for improvement to property located at 1735 North Broadway in the Gunn School Urban Revitalization Area.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Resolution 15-113 authorizing the mayor to execute the First Amendment to an agreement for private development and a consent to pledge and assignment of development agreement with XTL Incorporated, a Pennsylvania corporation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
I regretfully will not support this resolution. In the beginning, I had concerns about tripling the zoning of that classification of zoning to build a building 150 feet tall, but I did support the project in the end because of the promise of 50 high-paying jobs. We had an agreement, I appreciate, as I understand it, there's been some contingencies that financing lending institution would like, namely the elimination of, really the teeth of the agreement that would allow us most strongly to enforce the 50 job requirement and without anything, and this proposal would remove that condition or the security of that position and we would have to, if we ever had a dispute about them lowering the numbers, we'd have to both agree to a number or if we didn't agree to a lower number, I guess we'd go to court and fight about it with your money to pay for the lawyers. I want new business, I see new business, but I think it's a bad precedent to set to come to an deal with an organization, to give the people through their elected representatives authorizing a significant amount of tax incentives, and then the developer to come back and want even more goodies with nothing in return additional for it. I just don't think that's a proper precedent to set, and so I regretfully will not support changing the deal.
Any other discussion?
As we discussed at the working session earlier today, we understand that businesses, business decisions can change and anybody who's been involved with a real estate decision knows that until the day you close your eyes on pins and needles making sure that everything comes together with the financing and the inspections and you name it. And XLT was thrown a bit of a curveball on this one at the last moment and they came and made a proposal that they saw in good faith. Our city attorney sat down with them and negotiated to see if there was a reasonable middle ground and he believes that he found one, came back and made a proposal which in his opinion provides the city with an acceptable level of security against the risk that XLT is taking on and frankly, that we're partnering with to an extent. This is indeed a substantial project like Google, this is going to mean a lot of business investment within the city and under the circumstances, I compliment our city attorney for his efforts to keep this together in the short timeframe that he was given. I think his legal opinion on this is a good one and although I certainly respect concerns to the opposite, in the end, I think it's in the best interest of the city and acceptable risk that this project carry forward, so I'm happy to support this.
Other discussion?
I didn't see anything that really concerned me when I read through the documents. City attorney, you know, does a specific job for us, as do all the other city department heads, so we kind of put our faith in them that they know what they're doing. For me, I think this is a good project. I can still, you know, clearly see from when we approved this last time what the building will look like. I think it's a very good-looking building, be a great addition to the city and to that particular corridor, so I intend on supporting the resolution.
I've been in support of this project from the beginning, but I absolutely understand Councilman Watson's concerns and honestly, had it not been for the commitment of the owners of this company that they are bringing those 50 jobs, they didn't want that removed from the development agreement, but what did happen is with this renegotiated development agreement, it allows for some concessions in order to meet what the lenders wanted. I have great faith in these particular owners, that they are committed to our community, but I can certainly understand why there would be concerns, but I feel like that there's such a short timeframe here, we're in spring building season and you know how that is, we get attorneys in a room and they keep going trying to find something else, they could very well miss out on their spring building season when I think it's something that we've all supported from the beginning, so I'll be voting in favor.
And you guys are in the audience, did you wanna say a few words at this time? Sure.
Kenneth, can you give your name and address for the record?
My name is Kenneth Garrett, I am the CFO of XTL, 3200 South 70th Street, Philadelphia, PA. And just a couple of words, the change in the agreement was not one that the company sought. As we looked to monetize the agreement, the TIF, and that is turn it into immediate cash to take advantage of the building season, the financial company that we retained made a statement that it might be a little bit easier to put in the market if we changed the language. They wanted stronger language. However, because of our commitment, we worked with the city attorney here to come up with language that we thought would be able to place the note, but also protect the city. Let me say, I've known the Serone family and I've worked for them for 15 years. We have made a statement, and let me be unequivocal, we will bring a minimum of 50 good-paying jobs to this city. And let me make a couple of other statements around that. Since we have entered into this agreement, we've had a couple of clients that have asked us for additional services, which we believe will add more jobs. Additionally, when we put together the model, which I do, that was at 70% of the capacity of the facility. So at 70% capacity of 34,000 slots, that gets us to 50 jobs plus a few more. So if we go up to 80% or 90%, we're talking about more jobs. Let me say before the council, I've said it to this mayor, I'm saying to the citizens, that XTL will bring a minimum of 50 jobs and we anticipate that there will be more. Thank you very much for your time.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign.
Applications, permits, and cancellations.
Motion to approve 7A through D.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Madam Clerk, any citizens' requests to be heard?
No requests to be heard, but I do have a request for council to receive and file a letter received written by Lyle De Mars via Cherry Bailey, received on Friday.
Motion to receive and file.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Your own.
I missed last meeting, I know you guys probably missed me.
Still only get five minutes, Bruce.
Bruce Kelly, 864 McKenzie Avenue. I finally got my tree trimmed. The thing that I was kinda upset about is it took almost four years. There should be no reason why something like this shouldn't have been done a lot faster without me calling and calling and arguing and fighting with the Parks Department. Okay, the next thing is, the Parks Department having a meeting, I don't really get along with them, so I'd like to request, and you're not gonna believe this, they're going, they want two signs for Fairmont Park, there should be three. Everybody forgets about, what is it, Huntington up there is an entrance to the park. Why shouldn't we have a sign up there too? That's, I think that's be a pretty good thing. And then, mention the water, did the waterworks go to court yet or have you heard any results over that?
Not familiar with what you're talking about.
Well, they were supposed to go to court over the water, what they were discharging back in the state of Iowa says one thing and...
They've been working with the Department of... They've been working with the, uh, Department of Natural Resources, and I think they've meet, they've reached a mutual agreement for now, was the last...
And whatever happened to this midtown? We had those meetings at the library, whatever became of that, anybody ever hear any more about that?
I think they completed the study, they made recommendations, I think that, uh, staff, um, have some ideas and have talked to some people that want to put some small office space building down there, some developers that would, they're like a contractor space and a, you know, small, one or two-person businesses.
Not going to have a big water slide?
No, no big water slide. They, uh, but I think staff...
No, I meant they were supposed to, we were supposed to have another, they said we'd have another meeting and never heard of another one.
Yeah, I don't know when they're going to roll out the public, uh, part of it. I think staff got, um, has heard from this council that they'd rather work on West Broadway as a priority rather than that midtown section, but that doesn't preclude doing some things in the interim, it will be a long-term development.
Well, we already got a 30-year goal down there anyway.
Yeah.
We're just going to go back, basically go back to that?
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's probably a 20- to 30-year project, but that said, I know for a fact that, uh, a couple of developers had called about the potential for building small business strip mall down there.
Well, it's, it's a commercial area, and it should be, that's what it always has been, and that's what it should remain because of the, the access to the interstate and everything else.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Sir? And if you would, your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, David Flavin, 307 North 40th Street, Council Bluff. I apologize because I was looking at the, um, April 6th information, and I saw that you had, uh, Resolution 1592, and then you have like 15102, which is basically the same heading or type, topics, and I wanted to ask the question. I understand that that's supposed to be a sewer system, and it's supposed to be like 3.1 million dollars, where's the 3.1 million dollar sewer project coming from? Where's the money coming from? It wasn't in your budget the last time we were here.
I believe it is, but it's in the capital improvement plan for the City of Council Bluff, and, uh, through the, the general obligation, uh, bonding, um, of prior years, the streets that didn't get voted on this year were about 2 million, um, we're looking at, um, a rise grant, which is renew Iowa's, um, economy, and I can't remember what the S stands for, to put the streets in, but, um, this would be the grading in the, uh, it's a two-phase, the first phase is grading, the second phase would be, uh, the sewer installation. I think those things will happen this year, um, the streets would be in 2016.
Well, then you all need to be talking with your planning board also because they were, when we went to that meeting, they were avid, there was not to be any more sewer worker down there, and so it's kind of strange that it's now going to be sewer work.
It would be pretty impossible to put that type of development down there without putting in sanitary sewer system.
Well, I'm just telling you, you all, there's a lack of communications here.
Now, were, were they possibly suggesting that there wasn't going to be additional sewer work in, in that, that neighborhood that's already been developed to the north of Playland Park?
Well, yeah, maybe that, or no, to the south of it, on the other side of the highway.
Okay.
In that, so, and then...
On the south side of highway, I don't believe there is any more sewer work, I think sewer's done to there, this, this is the Playland Park here.
Right, and then, I just wanted to, I'd make a comment about your Article 6229, which is, we zoning down there? You know, you, you okayed spot zoning? I thought spot zoning was not legal here in Council Bluff.
That's not true.
Well...
Spot zoning is legal, but as a practice, it's, it's not, um, a prudent practice to spot zone, to mix things, but in today's world, um, people find an attraction to what they call a mixed-use zoning, and that would be residential with some retail that would service those residential, uh, a clothes cleaner, a coffee shop, those types of things, and, and so that is a, a planned development, which is why they call it PC, a planned commercial development, that allows some of those things to happen, but, um, spot zoning is not illegal, but is not a good practice generally to engage in, because you put an industry next to somebody's residential home, and so...
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Larry J. Thornton, 4119 Avenue D. Uh, much of this is going to be rhetorical, probably won't require an answer. I too, along with, uh, Mr. Al here, uh, have seen my taxes go up quite a bit in the last year. As you know, 4119 Avenue D is the last house. My backyard butts the levy. My taxes, uh, as you say, have not gone up, but back up, you say, the levy hasn't gone up, okay, but I'm still paying more taxes. So I don't care what name you tack on it, I'm still paying more taxes. Whether the levy's gone up or not, okay, now you say it's the state rollback that increased my taxes, okay, I'm still paying more taxes. Two weeks ago, I got a, a notice from the assessor's office that my assessed value went up $4,000, which means I'm going to pay more taxes. Is it because of the improvements I made in my house to increase the value? The improvements I made were because much of it was destroyed in the 11th flood. Much of it was destroyed and I merely, uh, had to restore what I once had. I spent almost $100,000 out of my own pocket to restore what I had. I was one of the only ones left there that wasn't forced to move that had a basement. Some houses were destroyed, some have been moved out and torn down, never to be moved back in again. FEMA came in there, said, "We'll help you out." After three appeals, I think it was, I got a whopping 18,000. Out of 100,000 in repairs, I got a whopping 18,000, and the arrogant FEMA inspector looked at me and he says, "You know what FEMA is?" He says, "We're not an insurance company." I says, "I know you're not an insurance company, but I kind of expect you, the government, FEMA, to kind of replace what you, the government," and people here are not going to like this, "the Corps of Engineers destroyed. You destroyed my property, and you're only giving me $18,000, and now I'm assessed at 4,000 more over the last year, just because I want to live there, just because I made improvements to live there." Or is it because of this new Playland Park, uh, development going on, is that increasing my property value? I don't know. Is it? Either name you put on it, I'm paying more taxes. Okay, I'm retired, collecting social security, I got a whopping 1.7% increase last year in my social security benefits. That doesn't even cover hardly inflation. And your president, President Obama, just signed an act in a few weeks ago that gives pensions the right to cut benefits, of which mine is one. Why? I paid into it for almost 40 years, and now I have the risk of getting it cut, so I'm making less and less money, paying more and more taxes. It's like I remodeled my upstairs bathroom, I was a general contractor for that, I hired all the shower glass cabinet guys, they kept talking me into, and I had a budget, kept talking me into, "Well, if you just replace this thing, it's not that much more." Okay, it looks better, I'll do it. Shower guy, "Put this fixture in, it's not that much, okay, I'll do it." Eventually ran $5,000 over my budget, because it's not that much more. Every little piece is not that much more, every little tax that I have is not that much more, but I'm still paying more taxes. I'm paying, I moved there in '02. I was single, moved there in '02, could readily afford the place, taxes right now, in this short time that I've been there, have almost doubled, house taxes have almost doubled. Is that reasonable in this short amount of time with what we've been through on the West End? You may say, "Well, we've helped you out." No, the city didn't help out, oh, they, they gave me free permits. I didn't have to pay for permits to rebuild. Was that $30 a shot? So I didn't have to pay for, they helped out. Other than that, nobody helped out, and now I'm getting thanked by more taxes. So you tell me what is going to happen. You say this, uh, access to this new Playland area is eventually going to be 40th Street. Has there been a commitment yet from state or anybody on that?
Yes.
There has? In writing?
Um, they are still in the design phase, but, uh, the whole interstate is being redone, as you've seen around you, and that's part of the, the...
That's segment four. The paper I have here, which came from the city's website, says section, segment four, timeframe has yet to be determined. In the meantime, access to this area is going to be still 41st Street. If you're talking this high-density, uh, population, whether it be office, condos, apartments, whatever, I predict this is going to be a bottleneck, it's going to be a nightmare trying to squeeze through 40th Street underpass. And if the state has to come in and redo that particular access, which according to this says they will, but has yet to be determined, that's going to need a major, major, because right now, a straight path from 40th Street is too low to just cut a tunnel through. You have to either raise it, which means more bridges, dig down, which I don't think you want to do that in that neighborhood, uh, tunnel down, which is going to be a cost to whom? Me, again, right? Taxes?
Yeah, you've, you've kind of lost me a little bit. The, the DOT, uh, that was the last phase of the interstate reconstruction. They have expedited that phase, um, it's now in the EIS phase, which is, um, when federal money is involved, it's an environmental requirement, it's not EPA environmental, it's historical, cultural, um, and so that analysis is being done. The, uh, the DOT engineer tells me, based on the current timeframe, they think that will be a four-year before that intersection is completed. The construction of the project to get the, the grading done and the streets and the sewers in is about two years, and then there'll be some construction time on the building, so it should correlate fairly closely. And my sense is that if things go as we anticipate, that because of the additional jobs, uh, the governor will have the DOT expedite the process even further, and will the Iowa Department of Economic Development, uh, will provide rise grants to get those streets in. Now, that is, comes from your state taxes and road use tax money, um, so it does come from taxes. Kind of to jump back a little bit, I understand what you're saying, and it's, it's a longstanding objection. I personally had, uh, politicians always say, "Well, the levy didn't go up," but, and, and, and the homeowner looks at their taxes, says, "My taxes went up." Would tell you, in the 11 years, um, the most recent 11 years, I've gone back and, and done some analysis, and on average, property taxes collected by the City of Council Bluff went up a little more, I think it was 1.1, but I haven't looked at it, a little more than 1%, total taxes. Now, that's hard to generalize for everybody, because someone like you who maybe improved their house, the taxes went up more, um, some, uh, the state rollback has had an effect because it used to roll back, now it's rolling forward, and so you're getting more assessed valuation, so everybody's went up, uh, 1.4% or whatever the rollback rolled forward, but overall, the tax dollars the city's collected have gone up about 1%, and, uh, agree with me or not, my philosophy's always been, and, and the same reason your COLA on your social security goes up 1.7 or whatever you said it did, the cost of living goes up for the city just like it does for individuals, and so it's incumbent on this body to manage the funds of the city in such a fashion that, that it kind of mirrors the, the cost of living or the, the Midwest Consumer Price Index, and, and so I think to, to believe that taxes naturally could go backwards is unrealistic, because we pay salaries, we pay utilities, we pay petroleum costs, we pay equipment purchases, all those things are components of the cost of living, and so, again, I think this body does a good job if it keeps the increase within the cost of living, and I think they've done that. Now, does that make you feel better when you get out your checkbook? It probably doesn't, and I understand completely what, what you're saying, it's, it's a struggle...
I'm still paying almost double this year.
Yeah, yeah, no, I know.
I will be, that is, I have, I, I'm paid up for the year, but next year, we'll see what happens, and, because like I said, I just got my assessed value, we'll see what happens.
No, it's, it's tough, we, and, and we're, and believe me, we're all attuned to that, that, that people on fixed incomes, um, and, and people in general, you know, I, I, I was a banker for 30 years, and I'd tell you, the last 15, I never got more than a 1% pay increase, and so I'm right in the same, I'm probably in a, not fair, because it depends on what your income is, but I was in a similar situation, I guess, 1%, and the cost of living's going up more than that, and so you're, I'm trying to struggle to keep up with the same quality of life.
I understand all that, I understand increased taxes, but let's call it like it is, don't, don't tell me we're not raising taxes when I'm paying more taxes. Just tell me you're paying more taxes.
Well, and again, the other thing is there, that people don't seem to equate, and, and unfortunately, because they don't, they don't seem to vote, is that the school board and the county also assess taxes. The, the city actually is the third in line in your tax dollars. School gets the most, county gets the second most, and the city gets the third, and so any one of those bodies who raises their taxes, and we all know, because two of them got voted out in the last election, that the county raised our taxes 24%. Not this year, but the year prior, which would be what you're paying taxes on today, so... 18 months in arrears is how we pay it, so...
Something else, if I'm 18 months in arrears, I get booted. I'm sorry.
You're fine, thank you for coming.
I got one more thing, Matt. When I talk to you about it, it says here, when I ask you about our taxes on this, on this building, and, uh, it says here, when I ask you, um, how much this project would cause our taxes to go up in the citizens' area, and you say that should not affect our taxes at all, but you never give me a clear answer when I ask you, "How's this going to affect these two buildings going up down there at Playland Park?" And I know that there are certain things you guys got to do, but I didn't get a clear answer on how this is going to affect our taxes, and I know it's going to.
And, and I, I think an honest answer, and I think I did address it, it should help stabilize the tax increase, and I'm not, because this gentleman's right, and I'm not going to say it's going to lower your taxes, but again, I told you two weeks ago, um, the cost of living goes up, so, um, if we, there's three ways to spread that out, and that's more development, um, and share the load with more people, raise taxes on the people we already have, um, or cut costs. And, and we look every day to see how we can economically cut costs, and I think you're going to find out, um, hopefully, next year, uh, that we've done a pretty good job of doing that, and, and the reason I put it that way is it, it really, in my second year, took money, I think, to find out how to cut taxes and to get the right people in and, and to pay for those, and so I don't think you're, this year, we didn't budget, we budgeted the levy to stay the same, but I think that next year, um, hopefully, we would budget a reduction in the levy for the first time in a while, but, um, but if you, we can generally cut costs and quit mowing parks, or, um, lay people off and, and not remove snow, well, every one of those things costs, some people get upset about that, but what this should do, they will get a TIF, which is a tax increment financing, currently is generating no taxes, owned by the city.
But it's still asking, not answering my question, I'm asking you.
Well, I did answer it, and, and what I'm saying is, we're going to spread the taxes... And, and what I'm saying is we're gonna spread the taxes out, which should keep it the same. You, it will affect you as far as tax increasing, not at all.
Last week you said, or two weeks ago, you said it would not affect...
It doesn't.
Okay, so...
Other than it may help you in the long run.
But if they come in and you give them a tax incentive...
It, it's rebating, today there are no taxes collected there. The TIF is a rebate of the new taxes they pay, not you, they pay. So if, if nothing gets built, there's no new taxes, we're just flat. But if they build there and we rebate even eighty percent, there's twenty percent of whatever's built there, new tax dollars, that then get spread out to the expense of running the city, that probably won't lower your taxes, but would help us defray increasing your taxes every time we add new tax base. And then once these go off the TIF, and, and they're usually diminishing, as they go off, a perfect example was Mynards and Walmart and Sam's, that was a TIF. It's no longer a TIF, all that property tax now comes into the city. It's an economic development incentive to try and get development started, to give them a leg up, to get started. And it's only what they pay that they get back. If they don't pay any, they don't get any back and it doesn't come out of your pocket at all. The intent though is to spread out the tax base so that we don't have to increase taxes overall on a limited tax base. And so, if we always stay ahead of the game, hopefully we can keep the levy...
So if they build and they get a tax incentive, they don't have to pay taxes, say, for five years?
They, they will pay some taxes, they won't pay a hundred percent.
Okay, so then more businesses come in, so then we get hit with these businesses coming in. It happens every time they build something new in our area or in, in the city of Council Bluff. Every time they build something, we get hit with taxes.
I don't think that's true.
It is true.
It isn't true.
And I can give you the, the figures on it.
I would, I would tell you unequivocally, that's not true. And what it does do is someone in your business gives them work. Every time we bring them in, it gives, it brings new construction jobs and, and would give you work. But the only people that, the only tax dollars that go back, the only economic development program that the state of Iowa allows us is to rebate taxes paid by the individual business. And so, it doesn't affect you, it doesn't come out of your pocket, it's the money that the new incremental increase in valuation generates can be refunded back to the developer as an incentive to get them to develop. And how we've structured it typically is five years at a certain percent, five years at a lower percent and wean them off that incentive. And then it all becomes taxable, which then helps everybody. It doesn't increase your taxes at all, does not, unequivocally, does not increase your taxes.
If, if you've seen an increase in your taxes, it's more than likely...
It's from somewhere else.
Resulting from the value of your house going up, the assessed value is higher, so the county is assessing more taxes. And the, the county also raised everyone's taxes. So we're all seeing increased taxes because of the actions of the county. And the school board is the other taxing entity. They didn't raise this year, but they have raised in the past.
Sounds like to me it's just a vicious circle. I don't think it is.
Well, no, I mean it's...
There's no taxes being paid there today. So if, if they build three hundred units of apartments and they get taxed and their annual taxes are two hundred thousand dollars and we give them eighty percent rebate, none of this has been decided, I'm just pulling numbers out of the air. But we pick up forty thousand new tax dollars and we give them back a hundred and sixty thousand of what they paid in, only what they pay in. If it goes down to fifty percent, the next year we pick up a hundred thousand, we give them back a hundred thousand and, and then if it goes to twenty-five percent, we give them back fifty thousand and we pick up a hundred and fifty thousand. And typically how, that's how, you know, it's structured on a diminishing fashion like that.
But it still doesn't impact the taxes that you pay on your property?
It's just their taxes.
Or that I pay on my property?
It's just their taxes. And so they get, they get their taxes.
When they build this thing, I can come back to you after it's all been built and our taxes go up, I can say, "I told you so because I knew they were gonna go up."
No, that's not true because there's some other reason. If your taxes go up, and I'm not saying your taxes won't go up, if they go up, they went up for some other reason, not because of new development. However, if your taxes stay fairly static, I'll flat guarantee you the reason they did that is because of new development. Because if there's no new development, as costs go up, the only alternative we have to have is to tax you at a higher rate or cut expenses. The third option is to get more development, spread out that new tax base amongst what it costs to operate the city, keep the cost of operating the city reasonable, and then that helps everybody. And so, it's not, this new development, flat guarantee it will not increase your taxes. I'm not saying your taxes won't increase, but I'm saying it won't be attributable to any new development.
Yeah, 'cause this jumped huge, I mean it's...
Everybody's house.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
I think if you want to get it in perspective, that development did not cause your taxes to go up, you can go to Neola. They haven't had any new development in Neola. And their ta- no, and their taxes went up too. Why? Because the county raised their levy. There's only so much this city council can be responsible for and the mayor's being very honest with you. He cannot guarantee your taxes won't go up, I can't guarantee that because we don't control your taxes. We control the least amount of your taxes. So, but what I'm trying to say is when you say development caused your taxes to go up, all you have to do is ask the residents in Neola, "Well, why did theirs go up? They've had no development, it went up..."
We're not talking about, we're talking about Council Bluff, we're not talking about here.
I was trying to help you understand that development doesn't cause your taxes to go up. I thought, you know, that might help explain it. Development does not make your taxes go up. What makes your taxes go up is your assessed value and your levy going up. This council hasn't raised your levy in eleven years.
What happened to Casino? Casino moved in and my taxes went from fourteen, fourteen a year, went right up to eighteen a year. So somewhere along the lines, taxes are going up for a reason.
But they are.
I think developments has got a lot to do with it because the casinos proved that when they first come in and they always said there was gonna be no taxes, blah, 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 and the minute they got up and running, our taxes...
And I think you brought that up two weeks ago, Al, there, there was one individual who said that and that was a salesman for the Paradise Casino that didn't get chosen. And they, they made that statement. Now that's an urban myth of the city of Council Bluff that we were promised when the casinos got here, taxes would never go up. And it wasn't city officials that said that, it was Mark Ramsey, who was the public relations person for Paradise Casino.
But you guys agreed with him because you allowed him to build it.
Paradise didn't get built.
No, but they built the casinos is what I'm saying.
No, but Paradise didn't build their building.
Well, I understand, but when the casinos, and my point that I'm making is, the taxes went up and I don't understand why, that's all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, you got your time, Ari. Anybody else? Anyone from the council? With that, we're adjourned. Have a good week.
At Council Plus Savings Bank, you get personalized customer service like nowhere else, like our travel club.
Come see us, bank with us, and travel with us. Council Plus Savings Bank, hometown banking the way it used to be.